Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody here to our July 5th Board meeting. This time I'd like to call it the order and ask Mr. Schley if he'd give us the invocation.
Yes, sir. That's right. Father, we come before you at this time of year, the celebration of the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, we know that those come from you. Father, that the freedoms that we have are gifts that you have blessed us with. Father, thank you for the men and women throughout history who have insisted on the freedoms that we enjoy. They paid with their blood on some occasions, Father. They played, they paid with sweat and tears. And so, Father, we stand on the shoulders of those who go before, who have fought for the cause of freedom. Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy, and we bless your name because of those freedoms. The freedom that we have to participate in our own government, Father, that's an invaluable freedom. And I think of these men, that they've been willing to, in a way, Father, to set aside some of their own freedom and take on the mantle of responsibility. I pray that you would bless them and give them incredible wisdom. Father, the freedoms that we enjoy could never be possible if it weren't for the men and women of law enforcement, our military, our first responders. If we didn't have them, if they weren't committed to what they do, Father, we could never enjoy the freedoms that we have. So, we bless you for them, and we give you praise and glory for what you accomplish in Christ's name.
Thank you, Mr. Schley. I guess in public comments, we have the pleasure of recognizing Deputy Tony Shack at this time. And Craig?
I'll be glad to, gentlemen, on your behalf. This is an occasion that we have from time to time. And as I said in the corporate prayer beforehand, I was thinking about Deputy Shack as I was praying and thanking God for the men and women of law enforcement who give sacrificially of themselves. And so, today is a day that we celebrate and we commend a deputy from the Rankin County Sheriff's Office. Tony Shack, you come on up, okay? Let's get you up here.
Yes, sir.
This is full embarrassment mode, as I want you to understand. But we intend to make you look good, and we deserve to look. This that we're going to read about today, gentlemen, is definitely noteworthy. Lives were saved because this man ran toward the danger and not away from the danger, and so, we want to celebrate that. I'm going to read this resolution. This is a resolution by the Board of Supervisors for Rankin County, commending and congratulating Rankin County Sheriff's Office and Deputy Tony Shack for heroic and life-saving actions. Whereas, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has consistently recognized our county's law enforcement under the direction of Sheriff Brian Bailey as a vital component of what makes Rankin County a desirable and safe place to live and raise a family. And whereas, the Rankin County Sheriff's Department has been a consistent partner with the Rankin County Board of Supervisors in serving and protecting the citizens of Rankin County. Whereas, in recognizing the importance of Sheriff Bailey, the other leaders of the Sheriff's Department, and the men and women who formed the department, the Board of Supervisors also recognizes extraordinary and heroic acts of individual officers. Among them, Deputy Tony Shack, whose training, quick thinking, extraordinary bravery, and selfless devotion to the safety of all citizens resulted in multiple saved lives. Whereas, on June the 24th of 2022, Deputy Tony Shack was on a routine patrol, protecting the citizens of Rankin County in approximately 2:00 PM while driving on Interstate 20 eastbound near mile marker 62. Deputy Shack came upon the scene of a serious auto collision. The collision involved an 18-wheeler and a passenger vehicle. The 18-wheeler's cab was fully engulfed in flames. Deputy Shack reacted quickly and without regard to his own personal safety. He heard the cries of a child from the direction of the passenger vehicle, and he located the child near a downed tree. Deputy Shack picked up the child and carried the child to safety while instructing the two other occupants of the passenger vehicle, the child's mother and father, to follow him to safety. And after confirming the safety of the parents and the child, Deputy Shack ran swiftly toward the flames that were engulfing the 18-wheeler, and he located the driver of the 18-wheeler, whose clothing was on fire. At great personal risk, without regard to his own safety, Deputy Shack physically removed the driver to a safe distance, extinguished the flames, and started emergency first aid. Deputy Shack is a consummate professional, a true public servant, who did not hesitate to ask when called upon, even at personal risk. Deputy Shack's heroic actions stand as a reminder to all citizens of Rankin County that the men and women of the Rankin County Sheriff's Office are trained and ready to run toward and not away from danger. As a result of the heroism of Deputy Shack, all of the victims of the collision are expected to make a complete recovery. Now, therefore, it's resolved, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors congratulates and commends the Rankin County Sheriff, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and especially Deputy Tony Shack for his dedicated service to all citizens of Rankin County. Deputy Shack is a fine example of the quality of men and women selected by our sheriff and his leadership team to serve and protect all citizens each and every day. That's resolved today, the 5th day of July, signed by each of the supervisors and by Chancery Clerk Mr. Swales. Deputy, thank you. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you for your service to Rankin County, and thank you for your heroism in the face of danger.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
All of our law enforcement guys, Sheriff, come up here, let's get a picture right quick.
I just got to tell you, the victim had to call Tony twice and thank Tony for saving us. I should have drank coffee with my wife because of you, who was the last missing.
I just got to tell everybody, it was not a big crack or anything. Y'all, we could not be in the department without these five men up here. Without y'all's support, there's no way I could hire this quality of people that we have standing up here. I just thank y'all for always putting public safety first. Thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all. Good job, fellas.
Put the most photogenic out here. Bacon, lay down in front.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
We'll get the dalmatian push-through in this next minute, right here. Shack, we trade your dog into a fire note.
Have to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, the last time he came, we honored you. You got run over.
Yeah. I got back in the car this time, though my dog is, don't worry, man.
All caps. All caps, for Holland.
That's Florida.
Well, do we have any upsets? Any people?
Talking about punk bill, right? It's a corn smell, punk bill.
That's a good visit down there. They're real good.
Sheila, how are you, buddy? Pretty good, huh?
How are you doing?
Good, sir. How about you?
How are you, buddy? You get it here.
We were under pressure because this was a one-ride.
AJ's over here doing an interview. Shack, AJ's over here doing, AJ's doing an interview over here, Shack. Did you get him straight?
All right. Let's move on to item number four. Old business. Do I have a motion on our old business?
You working?
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? There is a motion carried. Cessna, gentlemen.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Jared. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, Mr. Sullivan.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Do I? Well, I figured next year maybe Southern would win. And we have the state, Ole Miss, then Southern. But, I mean, Ole Miss was in the region. They went from worst to first.
Worst to first.
Yeah. And so, let's see. Item A, petition to change the assessment to 2021 real property and 19 and 20 personal property assessment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
And item B, petition to adjust 2021 Homestead exemption supplement role.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And item C, this is when I turn the role over to y'all, the request approval to the 2022 real and personal property assessment role, except written objections till August 1st and public hearing for August 15th.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And y'all, Keith's real happy and Wanda's real happy. Your assessed value increased 78 million, which is a 4.4% increase. And when your assessed value is basically 2 billion, 4% is good.
That is good.
I tried to stretch out 2 billion assessment, but I needed 18 million more because, I mean, 2 billion would give me a raise. But I couldn't squeeze it out, so maybe next year.
All right. We got a motion by?
If I'm not.
Mr. Gaines, a second by myself. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Motion carried. All right, Ms. Bridge.
Good morning.
Morning.
We had a couple of bids that we needed to take action on. The first bid that we opened is the 700-gallon sewer jetter. We received one bid in the reverse auction. The unit price was 99,841 with a 36-month buyback of 48,750. Recommend that be awarded to vacuum truck sales and service.
All right.
Wow.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Daniel.
See what that is?
Something he's going to use to go in. Isn't that Mike? Isn't that what he's going to do is blow out those, Mike?
Sewer, storm drains.
Storm drain, blow out that jetter that we were vacuuming, borrowing from PRV all the time.
How much was it again?
99,841.
We thought it was going to be 75 or so, but everything's.
That three-year buyback is pretty dang good.
I mean, someone $50,000.
Half of it back. If I remember right, when we discussed this, we can either tear the pipe out to try to clean it or try to get men in there with something or fire hose, if it'll.
Borrowing PRVs and we've been jamming fire hoses down there.
And that is probably, in my area, the number-one reason we have water over roads is the drainage just stopped up.
Mine too.
All right.
All right, so I got a motion by Daniel, a second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carried.
The second item, we opened a bid with a placement of hot-mix asphalt and cleaning and sealing of cracks. And my recommendation for item one is awarded to J and L Enterprises with AdCamp as the first alternate and AJ Construction as alternate number two. And for item number two, awarded to Sunbelt Sealing with AJ Construction as alternate number one.
Do I have a motion on that? I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Mr. Harrison.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Road work accomplished for, scheduled?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Request a utility permit for ceasefire for Eagle Drive and Woody Drive, District 5. Motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carried.
Request utility permit for T E C. Utility permit for Shallow Road, Walter Road, Tower, and Bradshaw is going to be in the District 4 area.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I got two other things, Mr. President, if you don't mind while I'm up here.
All right.
Talk briefly on. Utility permits, we hadn't changed anything on it, just giving y'all a heads up. Seems like contractors kind of all wanting to complain about our inspection deal. We hadn't changed our inspection since we started inspecting these utilities. But starting to, everybody's starting to call and complain because they're just not able to make productivity like they planned on doing following our rules on that.
What are the complaints about?
Because we're making them be four foot deep under the road, Jared, instead of two foot deep. I mean, we shut one down last week, told him four foot, and he bored it two foot, and we shut him down. You know, I mean, blatantly just doing things that they should not do. I mean, the permit is very clear that we issue and sign, and they sign. I'm just giving y'all a heads up because probably the bigger, more powerful people are probably going to reach out to the board at some point in time.
Didn't we meet with some of these? We were at five feet, and they asked us to go to four so the manhole wouldn't have to be as elaborate or whatever.
That's right.
And they asked us for that.
Well, OSHA requires them anything five foot or more.
I know. But they asked us to lessen it to where, and we did.
The problem is, the problem is, if you go five, you have to trench box.
Right. I know. I mean, I understand that.
But you can't trench box through certain places.
And we, we agreed with them, so they wouldn't have to do the trench box.
Well, but in their defense, I'll tell you, one of their deals, 42, their plows will go 42 inches. Their plows. And I rebuilt some of those plows. So, with that, that plow go 42 inches, well, you know, if you got 42, you can be going 40 and whatever. But the way that, if you put that wire down, it runs through that plow. So, that's where part of the problem is, they don't have a five-foot plow, and they'll have a 48-inch plow. So.
But the bore machine, when you tell it to go four foot.
I understand a bore machine. I'm talking two different things here. So, I understand their argument are almost impossible for them to put up, take a plow. In some places, they put it down with a plow.
And we watch them do that. I mean, if they parallel on the road and they're not in the road ditch.
Right.
I mean, we've got grace periods, but I think what we're running into is.
Well, there's difference in two foot and 40 inches.
Yeah. What we're running into, we really haven't forced their hand on this. And I think, and me and Tim have been talking about it, they don't give us real good detailed drawings when they give us something. They, we kind of come, we kind of massaged ours and said, if you're going to be in the back eight foot, they don't have to be detailed. If you're going to be less than that, we got to have detailed drawings. And what they'll do is they'll show us stuff in the back eight foot, and then we go out there and inspect it. And guess what? They're two foot off the road. They ain't even know where's where they need to be.
Right.
So, I think what we may have to do is force the engineering side of these utility people to give us more of a detailed drawing. Am I correct in what I'm saying?
Yeah. The main issue I see is something is being put on the permit. The permit approved, and then in the field, if they have a copy of it, they're not really looking at it. They're not paying attention to where the permit says they need to be. The permit meets the requirements, but then they're not.
They're not doing what they're supposed to do in the field.
And they're not calling back, saying, hey, I got to adjust it because of whatever reason. That's the biggest problem right there. If they followed their drawings.
My deal was, from here forward, with y'all's permission, I would like to make them go to detailed drawings. I mean, that way, if engineer says they got to stake it, they got to do it. And there's no question where the line's going. But right now, it's just kind of a mystery of what me and Tim's looking at. And then the crew's going out there and totally doing something different.
Yeah, I know. I know just like that at my house, they bored. They bored the areas like through the woods. I mean, they couldn't get the plow in. Right. And then they plowed where they could down the roadside. But that's where they, when they were, let's just use Windstream, whoever. When they contracted with them, they contracted the bore areas and the plow areas because of the cost. And so, he explained it to me. I was like, why are you plowing that? He said, because they're not paying us to bore that because we can get a plow in, which is cheaper for us to do than having to bore that. So, that's their, their deal about the plow. And I don't have a problem with them long as they're down 42 inches or in that area.
But I mean, this way, Jared, there's, there's no excuse. You know, I mean, if we see a four-foot road bore, we're okay with it. And then they know they got to do a four-foot road bore. What we've ended up having to do, and we shouldn't have to be doing as far as we're doing, we're actually managing these crews out here. And, I mean, we should not have to be doing that. And I've told my guys, you know, we're not going to manage these crews. If you go out there and see something wrong, you ride them up. And, I mean, it's nothing to ride a crew up three or four times a week, and then we shut them down, and then, then it starts spilling over from there because they're not doing what the permit says to do.
Your guys are doing good, though? The guys that you have.
Yeah. I mean, our guys, I mean, all we do is going out and checking depths, making sure they're in the right area they're supposed to be in. I mean, that's like one of Daniel's the other day. They said, we in the utility permit. We don't monitor if you're in the utility permit. But guess what? They weren't even in the utility permit. They was on private property, hadn't even talked to nobody over there, you know? I mean, just placing cables. They're, the utility people of the world is drawing one thing, and the contractor's doing something else. And we got to get, we got to get all this tangled up. And the only way I know to do it, it's no different than one of our jobs. If we bid out, Tim presents a set of plans, that's what you go do. If it's not something, if it's something different, then you do a change order and you move on. And that's what I would like to do, is more of a detailed draw.
What's the difference as far as a provider? What all?
I mean, engineer's going to have to go out and, it's going to cost AT&amp;Ts, the ceasefires and stuff a little more in the world, Jay, because right now, they've got a guy sitting on a computer that's drawing these plans up. And you know he's doing that because it don't even match the road that you're doing. I mean, it'll show a curve in the road. I mean, we know it's got an S curve in the road, and they'll be showing a straight line through it. I mean, it don't even match the road. So, they're just drawing something off of a computer, and I'll let Tim explain more of that.
The main issue to me is what's on the permit is not getting done in the field. Now, I agree with Mike that if they had more detail on the permit, they might, could avoid some of the conflicts that they end up running into in the field. What's happening is, for them to do it, they're not going out there and surveying and picking up where a lot of the utilities are. They're picking up the things they need, like where their pedestals are and where power poles are, things like that. They're not picking up other landmarks and things out there that might cause them to have to adjust their construction. So, to me, the critical part, though, they're, they're showing it generally in the back five foot of the right-of-way, you know, at the proper depth. So, if they will install it like their permit says, that's great. And the only way I know for the county to police that more is put more people out there. And Mike certainly doesn't have the manpower to do that now, but it'd be adding on people to. And I don't know how to hold them accountable for that. One, I thought one possibility might be to make them mark the whole job before they start. Just paint the line where they're going to be. That way, an inspector could go out there and at least ride the whole job in maybe two hours and satisfy himself that they're going to be in the right place, and then spot-check them as they go back from time to time. But the issue is the policing of it, if you will, that it's just not, they're meeting the requirements on the permit. It's just not going in and feel like that.
Well, how often does that occur?
Every, every single one of them. The other problem with that side is, even if they go through it.
I got three utility contractors working today, and I'll have to take them up there or not.
Even if they go through it, they still can't come back and give us the red lines or where they put them to match where the lines were. So, let's just say they deviate on it. We come back out there later, and we find that there's been a problem that's not put in the right way. We've got a sinkhole, or a storm drain's collapsed, or they punched through something. So, even after it's over with, it doesn't even match what their drawings say. They don't even alter their drawings after they move their cables on site. It's, I mean, it's.
So, the, the.
I fussed enough about it.
To keep them out of our way as we maintain the roads. Yep. Right? We don't want to get a bucket into them and that type of thing. So, knowing that they're in the back eight feet is very helpful to our guys. So, there is some benefit to, to them, to us having a permit that shows that their permit required them to be in the back feet inasmuch as if we get into them and we're clearly not in the, in the back eight feet. We've got a strong defense when they want us to pay for their own wrecked infrastructure.
Right.
I like that part. I mean, I like that part. The part of having, and what Tim was talking about, having to mark it, I think that's a good idea. I'm trying to look at the side. If you got a, they're going to have to have an engineer, kind of what I think, I was picking up on what you're saying, and give you an engineer route.
It'd be just like Windstream. I mean, we met with engineers the other day that'll be on site, and they'll mark it out, is what they told us.
Well, that's okay, but to have them sit down and draw it out as like an engineer-type deal, I don't know. It's kind of hard to ask them. If you go mark it, like you're talking about, that's pretty self-explanatory. This is where the mark is, where it's going.
How does he get the place to mark if he's not looking at a set of plans, engineered plans? That shows where they're going to go?
I think the issue where Mike's trying to head is if, to do a detailed drawing, you've got to send a survey crew out there and do a topographic survey of the whole area that you're going to put the line in. And Jared's right, that's going to be extremely expensive for them. We will, we will get some blowback from that. If you want them to do it, it's fine, but that's where they would realize, hey, there's a, there's a creek there, or there's something where we have to deviate, where we need to get closer to the road. Whereas now, the permit's showing in the back five feet, and they're getting to something saying, we can't go there. And they're getting right off the edge of the asphalt and hoping the inspector doesn't come by until they get it covered back up.
Yeah. So, who was it you had to sit down last week?
AT&amp;T really, right now, is my main problem.
So, when you saw they were two foot, what do you do?
Well, I mean, we asked them to pull back their bores, but I mean, you don't want to leave a hole in the road, so we left the casings in there, but we hadn't allowed them to put the cable in it.
Oh, they bored the road?
Yeah.
Under the road.
Under the road. They ought to put a casing out of the road, two foot.
But, yeah.
We have a meeting with AT&amp;T.
Hopefully, we're going to get some of this straightened out.
This week.
What you going?
This week.
Yeah.
This week.
But I mean, it's just not AT&amp;T, Jay. It's everybody we're going through. I'm just really giving y'all a conversation and kind of looking for the direction. Y'all want to keep pressing on these utilities to be in the right areas and do the right thing. And, I mean, that's what we're just trying to do, is make sure they, nobody's going out there holding a tape measure every two seconds on them to make sure they're four foot, you know?
Well, they not hurting anything in District 3 because I had never seen them.
I can assure you up here in Brandon, there's a lot of places that have.
And the whole thing is, is, I mean, some of these contractors running here two years ago when we started having this problem, putting this ivory in. They're, they're tearing it up up there. Back off, and now they're trying to catch back up, Jared, is what they're trying to do.
Well, you saying boring, I'm thinking, when they bore, not boring the road. I understand what you're saying there, when you're actually cutting to put a casing on the road. Because when you're talking about boring, I thought you were talking about line boring, like they.
Everybody, everybody's trying to, I mean, everybody knows the cost of what's going on in today's world. Everybody's trying to cut out on costs because they bid this work or looked at this work six months ago. And they just trying, everybody's trying to get by with it as least as they can, which brings me.
Four foot and two foot, pretty obvious. You start boring under the road.
Which brings me to my next subject. I don't know how y'all want to handle it, I mean.
They want to get out before lunch.
Well, this ain't going to take but a second.
Yeah, before two, before two.
All I'm asking for is, Mr. Schley, the board attorney. I mean, we've let some of these contractors off, some of these bids, and then they've said they're going to honor the rest of the bids for the rest of the year. They know what the world was doing. And now it seems like everybody's wanting to get a little crawfishy when I order material and stuff. And I would like permission from the board for Mr. Slate to write our vendors a letter saying, you know, you've honored this, this is a term bid. I'm sure Mr. Slate will put a lot more effort than I can. But I mean, we just bid asphalt, bid out to lay in place. I don't know how much of it we're gonna use. But if our asphalt people's not gonna honor our FOB, it don't do no good to honor that bid.
Right.
You know, and we start already getting some pushback. I had some asphalt lined up for Friday, and all of a sudden this morning, we can't get it.
Say that one more time.
He had it lined up Friday.
We had it lined up Friday to get asphalt, and now all of a sudden, we can't get it. Our vendor says they can't furnish that material today.
This is for you to pick up?
Mm-hmm. So.
Hey, did you say?
Can we go to the second one right now, if he's got it?
Yeah, if we, I.
Well, we don't have a, me and Bridget's been going through the stuff, and we don't really have a.
We don't have an alternate on the base.
We don't have an alternate on the second of the base that we're trying to pick up right now.
For clarity, we're looking at the very end of Andrew Chapp, and they're ready to finish. And we can't get it.
Okay.
They're supposed to have it there. The crews are there today, set up, ready to go.
Yep.
Witness ordered and delivered.
We haven't even issued a PO for it yet, though.
Yes, our asphalt, we're doing that. We're, Mike is.
We're furnishing the asphalt, just like we're gonna do on, on asphalt. Just like we was looking at doing on Gulliver Road, Jared. You know, like we talked about, just try to keep our costs down on these jobs, Jay.
Steve, let me, and, and all of you. Um, so we've got, we've got crews in place waiting on asphalt, is that what you're telling us?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, uh, we, we've got first responders that are gonna have access issues because we have crews?
Oh, we've had to shut the road.
All right.
At times, and then I'm sure will be some more.
All right, do we have, do we have an alternate supplier that would work with us?
Not on base.
Not on base.
We have to issue a PO for a base. We only have the monthly PO for the surface, so we have to issue a PO yet to get to the base.
Which I got that on my desk, Bridget, but when I got the phone calls.
What I'm trying to get at is, do we have a go-to supplier that we know we could get something from?
I don't know the answer to that.
Get right over there and look at the command deal state contract. The new one's started today. We may be able to piggyback off that, but I'll go check real quick.
I've actually got a phone call.
Bridget, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get them to declare an emergency so we can go do whatever we need to do. But I, but there's no need to do that if we don't even have a supplier.
Well, I don't think that they don't have it, they don't have that price.
Yeah, so.
So what do we do?
What? Where I'm positioning us, it doesn't matter. Y'all are gonna declare an emergency, and you're gonna go get the asphalt that's required to finish this job and get that road open. And we'll worry about the price of it after the fact.
Well, uh.
So who's the one that's not vital?
Adcamp.
So, and they were the only bid?
Well, they're the only ones that's held their FOB base in place, uh, you know, when everybody pulled their bids, Jay. You know, and we had, we had a contract for everybody to do that. We chose not to really force on it because everybody said, we'll keep your FOB going. But we didn't force on the issue, but now that we need it, you know, it's kinda, everybody dragging their feet, and it's not just, it's just not Adcamp. I mean, it's rock, it's.
Yes.
I would be, I, I, I could digest it better if they said, you know, right now, if it's late date, we can grab, we can get our arms around enough to finish this deal, but is there any way we can negotiate? And then I would put them with our people and see, but I don't think that was the response.
No, when, I mean, the thing about it is, Steve, and I, I know where Craig's trying to position us, and I agree with Craig where we at, because if we do negotiate a price, it'll be the next board meeting before we can figure out anything to do, and we got a contractor on the ground.
Yeah, and I would prefer, if we can get it off state contract, that's, clearly, that's the answer. Definitely would prefer to go that direction.
Hopefully, hopefully, we may know the answer.
Let's just do it, do it legal, and, um.
So.
We gotta get the road open.
So what I would like for us to do, just so that Bridget's got full flexibility, is to acknowledge that your FOB base, your, uh, your bid, uh, your semi-annual bid was first recommended bidder was Dixon and Bowen. They, they let Mike know in writing, we cannot honor that.
Like, when they pulled theirs, they pulled everything.
Yeah, your alternate was AJ Construction. They said, we cannot honor that. Your third, your second alternate, number three horse, was at Adcamp, and Ralph said, we'll honor it. And now he said no. So we need to acknowledge that we do not have any bidders left standing on our semi-annual. And therefore, we've got two choices. We can go to state contract and pick up FOB base if we can find that and pay whatever the state contract price is, okay? Or we can, and in conjunction with that, declare an emergency and allow Bridget to secure the asphalt from any supplier she can find at whatever the cost is.
Wow. Um, I know, I don't wanna get gouged, but still, if we're in a, I mean, they poured the curves last week. We poured, I mean, this is coming down too. I can throw a rock near it from where it ends to where we're pouring, I mean, to finish up.
Hang on, Bridget, hang on.
So, ah, well, it's been just one thing after another. This whole deal is, you think you're coming out of the woods, but.
But since you're gonna have us declare an emergency, would it, rather her just call them and say, all right, what can you give it to me? Could you not call all three of them and get the best price and go with it?
I wanna do the most economical thing we can do.
Once, once y'all have established that we have no bidders.
Right.
And you declare the emergency, we, we have the flexibility then to go source the material and get it, get a PO issued and get it going.
You're not just have time to get quotes, so that's the part of the emergency.
Yeah, and I don't know how much money we're talking about. I'm assuming it's greater than, what's the, what's the numbers now?
You're talking about three thousand?
Seventy-five hundred now? What's, what's the bottom number now?
We talking about three thousand tons of base, or whatever the dollar figure is, times that.
Is it, is it more than seventy-five grand?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
So, so we're, we're gonna have to be within the context of an emergency declaration to get.
If y'all would give, give Bridget, I mean, me and Bridget just started talking about this before the board meeting. Y'all give us a few minutes, then we'll come back to this toward the end of the board meeting, what I'd like to do, if y'all don't mind.
I'm, I'm just gonna, and, and I don't know prices very well and all this, but I don't want y'all to think, I mean, he said, is it above seventy thousand, seventy-five? I think it's gonna be well over there. I think it's gonna probably be over two hundred, about two hundred thousand.
I think so too.
So, I mean, I, everybody know what we're talking about, uh, and that, and that may not even be.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, it's three thousand tons, it could be a hundred dollars a ton.
Well, I figured ninety.
And it could be.
Ninety dollars?
But you've, but you've gotta get the road open.
I do, I do.
We gotta get the road open.
The, okay, the contract says only during emergencies and things like that. This road was not supposed to be a closed road during this normal work. Uh, we have had to close some lanes and things at times, but we thought we were past all that. And now we're down where the most congested part is.
I wanna make the, make sure the record's clear on something as well. You know, we, we've got a contract with, with a contractor, Site Masters. They're responsible for providing this material and getting it laid in place, okay? So it's contractually, they're obligated to it. So we need to make it clear to them, at some point, we expect them to shoulder whatever the cost is.
Okay.
Where, this is gonna be upfront.
No question.
On the, on the county, because they have no better option available to them to try to find asphalt.
Well, they need to rely on what we're doing.
Yeah, so they would, they would, they're, they're gonna be saddled with the exact same issue that we are, right? So we need to make it clear to them, whatever the cost is to the county, is gonna get reflected in the paperwork with Site Masters on this contract.
So, under, under what we were trying to do now, we had gone in and taken their total asphalt price and taken out what Mike's FOB price was and told them, that's what we're going to pay you to go get it from the plant and place.
Put it in place.
Which was actually less than they were getting paid because their original FOB number, it was, I think, three dollars cheaper than Mike's because it was bid a while back, so. Uh, so we told them, we're just paying you the difference. So there needs to be a lot of conversations there because he, he may, he may can, they may, they may have a, I don't know how their contract had an escalation clause.
Definitely need to make sure the contractor can't, doesn't just wanna handle it himself.
But we just need to have some options today.
We're not gonna take any action until you and Bridget go.
Hey, let me ask you one thing while you're here. Just thought about that. You said the other day you can't, you, you, you said you can't get washed gravel, or?
That's right. We don't have a washed gravel bid no more there. They, they was the first ones that pulled out of us.
Okay, all right, do we, I mean, but is washed gravel available? Is just we don't have a bid for it?
I talked to several contractors, and unless you're just hooked in with the gravel people, you just about can't get washed gravel right now.
I talked to one the other day, cause I was looking for something else. And, uh, I asked him about that too, and they sent, I don't know if I'll say it here, but anyway, they sent me what you could get it for. They could get it for. So, anyway, that may be something we wanna talk about later.
I mean, I'll look at it, I'll get it from you and, and look at it. But, I mean, right now, they tell, telling us that everything is tied to the concrete plants and the asphalt plants, you know?
Yeah, well, I see that, yeah.
And I know the rock is the issue with the asphalt plants, cause I mean, I'm fighting it every day right now, trying to, to get rock out ourselves. So, I mean, everybody's dealing with this, but right now, you gotta keep moving on. I mean, we just can't stall out right here at the end.
Mike, I got one thing, a few seconds. You and I looked at two drainage issues, one on Lawrence Road. Uh, there's a major creek that flows just up from the, used to be the Thompson House.
Yeah, sure, I know.
And it's been backing up. And then the other one, O forty-three, creek that goes up into, I mean, the upper ends in the swamp land, really.
Yeah, sure.
And you discussed that we might look at upsizing the pipe, or something may be wrong with it. I don't remember. But it was, uh, you know, you could look at it as far as maybe a different pipe angling it. And I, that's your and Tim's.
Right.
Y'all are professionals. Um, and we mentioned, I would like to have Kenny, who is the best. Both of those creeks have known, they, they're known to be beaver havens on down. And if you don't, I mean, you just leave them alone long enough, there's your problems. And I know this water on Lawrence Road goes over three county roads when it flash floods now. It didn't used to do that. I mean, I, I know it stopped up down there somewhere, but it goes through some private areas.
So what we're running into, Steve, uh, they'd cut you off, but, uh, Jack Kenny, you know, that does the road work, and then I've got NRCS that does the private problem, but when I called Scott Shepherd the other day, he just had neck surgery and don't know when he's gonna be able to get back, back to work. So I'm, I'm gonna need some help from Greg to kind of.
I would like for Kenny.
As long as Kenny's able to get permission from the property owners.
Permission. If somebody don't give him permission, they'll run away.
Yes.
I have a feeling these people are gonna give him permission because their places are staying up.
Right, right.
And he is the bid. He will go in there and he'll check back. He'll run those traps for months.
Yes.
You can't go in there and catch them and think you've done it.
Oh, yeah, keep going back, going back.
Yeah. And that's the problem with NRCS.
That's the way the guy cleared up, cleaned up my mom's place.
I mean, they, they own the whole state.
Well, the guy that was, I mean, it's our guy, I think, may have seven counties or something. He can't do, stay there like we need him.
Guy yesterday that, that does it, uh, around Smith County.
Mr. President, let me, let me, uh, let me set the table here.
All right.
So, Mr. Gaines has made a motion to both add and approve something. That motion is, uh, that Lawrence Road, which is county public road, is being overtopped by water, stormwater that is caused, we believe, by beaver infestation. And we have, uh, we have a contract, uh, to protect the county public roads with Kenny Prince. And we would ask Mr. Prince, uh, to take care of that matter. So this is a motion that's being made.
Own that road and O forty-three, it's the exact same issue.
Lawrence and O forty-three. So the motion, uh, to add and to approve is to authorize Mr. Prince to do whatever he's, needs to do with the permission of private property owners. And the motion's being made pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated nineteen dash five dash ninety-two point one to protect, to protect the public roads. And Mr. Prince, that's, that's the basis for the motion to add and to approve.
I make that motion.
This needs a second.
All right, Steve. Jared, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Mike, it has no reflection at all on whatever you're gonna do with the pipes. Whether we do the pipes or not, we need to do this.
We're, we're looking at that, Steve, but it's gonna take a little bit because, I mean, we're trying to gather a lot of data on that.
All right, we got a motion to add, now do we not approve?
Motion, second.
All right, motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have is on North Shore Landing Phase Four. We're recommending approval of the final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. That's a District Two development.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carried. All right.
Item B, Mr. President, is on our Spillway Road overlay project. That's an LPA project. Uh, you will recall, we received one bid from Superior Asphalt in the amount of one million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. That was well above ten percent above the engineer's estimate, uh, and that was the only bidder. And, and the regulations require that, uh, that all bids be rejected, so we're recommending that we reject that bid and resubmit. Talk to M.D. and see if there's any additional funds or go forth with the county project, but right now, I'd reject the bid.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Yeah, hey, can I get one more thing? I got Mr. Parker up here.
Motion carried. Go ahead.
I know we talked about the Mill Creek project, and I'm sure you're ready to advertise that. I mean, I know you're just holding it to wait to get that permit.
I'm ready.
I know you are. The Corps is slow planes again, but we talked about pre-buying the rock.
Right.
Were you able to put a number? Hang on, Mike.
Yeah, so.
Were you able to put a number on that rock?
So we're estimating on, on that project, thirty thousand tons of rock. Uh, which is a lot of rock. We don't know on these, you know, we talked about going ahead and pre-buying for some of these other projects too. We're not really sure about them because we don't really know the scope of how much channel improvements, but it's probably gonna be three to four thousand tons per project there. Uh, so you can take that thirty thousand and really go as high as you want, uh, cause there's a lot of projects in the queue over the next few years in, in rock. If Mike has the place to store it, 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 it doesn't go bad.
And that money comes out of the ARPA.
That's correct.
Same side of that deal.
I'd say get what we can get.
I'd rather get it, and because we're gonna get into a point where you may not be able to get it, and we wound up, held up again, and I'll be like eighty years old, and.
This is real prep, right?
So, yes, a riprap, yes.
Yeah, I mean, just the cost of what we're experiencing right now, looking at it on, would it be next year, if we can get it?
I would, I would, I would like to at least buy the thirty thousand pounds, whatever you said.
Thirty thousand tons.
Tons, pounds, ounces.
That's two hundred, that's two hundred pound rock.
I believe you, all the way around.
Will that come in on a rail car? Could you get it brought in rail car out there, Flowood or somewhere, and have it drop? Would it be cheap?
Probably could get it in the dark side, except we got one, but, uh, I think we'd have to clear a site distinction for it, or, I mean, that's.
I mean, I, I would like, I would, I would like to start at that number, and anybody else wants to add their rock to the project, add it to it, but.
You would wanna look at that kind of rock.
Bishop, how much, how much do you need on yours?
I don't think I need any.
Well, y'all can come up with an estimated cost, um, estimated amount.
I mean, just double it. We're gonna always use riprap rock.
Well, we don't want.
And we got these projects.
Only thing is, I understand that.
Look, I don't, look, don't be honest with me. I don't see this project happening.
That'd be kinda scary.
I don't. I mean, I.
Jay, this year, it ain't gonna be.
We have a meeting with the Corps.
You wanna order fifty thousand tons?
I would say, don't, don't say, don't just assume, just yet.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to add that to the agenda, and we'll put it under Mr. Parker's section, to purchase, pick the number, Brad.
Why don't you, yeah, I like the number you said.
Fifty thousand tons.
Twenty thousand tons, play, some other projects that might happen, so.
What you talking about, what you talking about cost?
Thirty-four dollars a ton. It may honor it thirty-four dollars a ton.
Thirty-four dollars a ton.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four dollars.
About one point five, one point six million dollars.
That's coming out of the, that would come straight out of the ARPA.
We gotta buy it anyway.
I know, I know.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda to buy fifty thousand tons of your two hundred pound rock, so. So that'll be my motion to add under Mr. Parker's.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, now I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. If something blows our drainage program off now, can we use that rock after the, we've bought it?
Slowly.
Absolutely.
Can we use it? I say slowly, yes.
Any bridge project that we got.
I don't know if we have that many.
It's not limited to a specific.
Yeah, that's what I meant, slowly.
Okay.
So, can, can you just explain how us having owner furnished, how that affects how we do the contract, the bid stuff? Just quickly explain that.
Yeah, so whatever job we have, well, well, let's just take Mill Creek for instance. If, if the rock is stockpiled somewhere, when we set up the plans and specs, we'll note in the, in the plans that the, the rocks will be furnished by the owner. And in the spec, it's gonna tell the contractor that when he bids on the riprap item, it is to go get it wherever it's stored. We'll tell him where it's stored and place it. It's owner furnished.
Well, that actually end up being more money though. Cause currently as they, they, you know, vendor gets it, he gets it delivered to the job site. He don't have to pay somebody to go truck it back and forth.
He, he's paying for trucking and his cost of rock.
Well, I know that, but will it end up being more?
I, I don't.
Possibly. That's what we talked about last board meeting. We don't know what the market's gonna do. Right now, what we know for a fact is we can't get it.
Can you get it? And two, what the price of it is at the time.
Yeah.
It could crash and everything could just bottom out.
Right.
We've got all this rock at one point four million dollars.
What we hope there, Jay, is the competitive bidding process keeps those guys keeping that haul and placement number competitive. But I mean, we have no control.
And what I talked to with contractors, my idea is, is knowing this area, say Brandon, Mississippi, and just saying the weather's impacting that, they, they know they can come around over here and get four or five loads and keep going. And then try and contract ten trucks and get them in there and bottom haul out of Brent. So where do you plan on storing that? Probably right across from my building on that side, right there, where you can see that. So you'll have to come pick it up and then go through the scale? Yes. Depending on what, we're gonna probably set, like I said, probably what I'm doing, it all comes in a certified ticket. So just like Mill Creek, if we're saying it's thirty thousand, we'll put that in there. When he comes with the final numbers and he says it's thirty-six thousand tons, then we'll have to add six thousand tons to that pop. I'll try to keep it designated so much, so many tons in a pop. But we do have a set of certified scales.
This is going way outside of what I'm really in. My interest is next term or two terms from now, there's a different five people sitting up here. And they're, they say, I don't wanna go with this dead gum plan for drainage. And now we got all this rock over here we can't use. But what I'm understanding is we can't. Whoever's here is good.
Yeah, I said just slower because you won't be using it.
Right, yeah, but, okay.
In theory, if the Mill Creek project was to happen, and I'm, about twenty percent it happens. If it was to happen, that's thirty thousand tons right there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
If that happened.
I'm for it. And I think eventually we are going to address these. They're not getting better.
Well, ultimately, you will have bridges that you have to replace that you have no choice but to replace. And rock's gotta go into them.
Right, I agree.
And we're looking for seven hundred thousand tons of bridge every time we do that.
Yeah, okay.
It don't take long.
It was just a discussion.
No, I get it.
This is a goodbye.
Yep.
And it's, it's the money that's been given to us.
Right. I agree.
It's kinda like silver market is right now, it's a good buy.
Silver?
Silver.
Hmm, I wouldn't know.
Alright, we got a motion by Daniel, second myself. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Hey, can, can I add one thing just on the Mill Creek thing? I know that doesn't really matter, but if we could get Mr. Slay or yourself to follow up with the core.
We, we have a meeting with them next week.
Just see where the permit process is.
We have a meeting with them next week in Vicksburg.
I know the goal was last November to start breaking ground before November comes up, a year later. I don't think it's possible, but if we could at least tell us that they received the application for the permit, they are working on it, they're not gonna approve it, or whatever is happening. It's just.
Face to face next week in Vicksburg.
It's a lot of heartache on my end for our incompetencies to get this done, so.
Alright, Mr. Slay, you're up.
Look at it this way, you're as close you ever been.
Closer, ain't no doubt about it, no doubt, no doubt.
Just like saying coming to Jesus Christ, we're closer right there.
It's imminent. Um, we, items A and B, Mr. President, if I may, get one motion for both items A and B to set public hearings July fifteen, nine AM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
President, item C is an authorization for the appropriate, appropriate signatory on our side to execute an MOU between EOC and the State Department of Health. This is to provide a kit that will be staged at an appropriate location that allows for the conversion of a school bus into a, basically into an ambulance. Uh, and so this is for a mass casualty event. Um, and so we've been in, uh, we've had an MOU previously, but this, this one needs to be updated. Uh, and so I'm asking, I've, I've looked at the, uh, at the MOU, made a few little revisions. It's ready to be signed. But this would allow us to work with the school district to provide for a bus that would be converted in, in a case of need so that it can be used similarly to an ambulance for non-ambulatory emergency response.
Will, will EOC be in charge of?
Yes, sir, so the.
Housing this, or is the school gonna?
Yeah, so the, uh, we, we will probably keep the kit with us.
It's, uh, we've had this thing for, since two thousand and ten. And, uh, there were two kits. One, the Pearl Bus Shop had one, just staged there. The other one was at the Rankin County Bus Shop. Pearl decided they did not wanna participate anymore. So we went and picked it up. State Department of Health came and got it last year. And now they're just updating their MOUs and we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna give this over back.
So, okay.
So that's all this is.
But it's got a home where it's staying in.
Yes, this Weathersby has been gracious of the school board to, uh, to house that for us. It's actually in a school bus now and, uh, not assembled, but it is in a school bus that has no seats in it, ready to go, so.
Okay, alright.
He's, he's been working.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, motion approved by Daniel, second by Steve. If, all in favor?
Jared. Sorry, we'll let you have it. But.
Alright. Alright, Mr. Keith.
Uh, item I have today is, uh, just for you guys to acknowledge receipt of a check. And this is, uh, from the Rankin County Human Resource Agency. This was a reserve account that we're transferring back into the Board's General Fund. This was an account that Human Resource maintained as a reserve account. It was over six hundred thousand dollars, as you can see there, six hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents. There's still money over there to close them out for the next couple of months. And we'll be making a, another substantial, uh, deposit into the general fund once we close them out.
Alright, I'll make that motion to approve. Good.
So we do need to take action, just for knowledge.
This is acknowledging receipt, I don't think we need a, a motion. But, but Daniel's already made a motion, so let's move forward.
To acknowledge.
Alright.
I'll second.
I'll go there.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, or acknowledgement carried. Alright, additional business to be discussed?
Yeah, so I'd had numerous, uh, calls and, and obviously I get them quite often through each of the subdivisions. And we've had this discussion before, but most recently has been brought up in regards to speed bumps in Bay Point subdivision. HOA called again and was adamant about trying to put some type of speed bumps down to deter the speeding. Um, that obviously they have the same issue that many other neighborhoods that the reservoir has. I discussed to them the same things we've talked about before in regards to the damage it can cause to emergency vehicles. Also tried to explain to them that part of the issue is that we don't have radar. And we've tried our best to get radar passed through the legislature, not even to really get it out of committee on that side. It would allow the sheriff to be able to do more on the speed control. But the issue on speed bumps came back up. So I, I'd ask Mr. Slay if he would come back to do some research back on the speed bumps and, um, let the board understand kinda where we're at on speed bumps or what the issues are or could be on placing those in those spots, so.
Well, I, I also have a lot of folks call me that's on rural county roads wanting speed bumps. I'm serious.
Your laugh is true.
I got, I just got a gig right now.
I'm laughing at the ideal one being there.
Oh, you get them all over for speed bumps, huh, yeah.
So to set the table a little bit, we, um, we, we use our, we do our best to follow what's called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. Uh, and our engineer would be familiar with this, our road manager's familiar with this. The, the general rule of thumb is we don't use things like stop signs or speed bumps or speed humps. We don't use those for speed control. They're used for other purposes. Uh, traffic control is what we're talking about here. So we, we routinely deal with situations where somebody's requesting a stop sign. Uh, and, and the basis for the request is they're flying through here. They're speeding through here. We don't use stop signs for speed control. We use that for traffic control. So we have to warrant those stop signs based on the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices that gives us a framework to make uniform decisions, hence Uniform Traffic Control. Uh, speed bumps in particular are problematic because people want them to control speed. Uh, and in the case of emergency response, we're trying to get from point A to point B as fast as we can. So we're gonna, we're gonna tear up fire trucks that we heavily invest in. We're gonna tear up ambulances, which is gonna cost us more with our service provider. They're gonna mess up and mess with our solid waste collection and disposal situation. Uh, typically, they are liability hazards and they are ours. If we allow some, a device like that to be placed in a public road, we inherit the liability associated with it. So if it is, if this speed bump, if this traffic control device is misshapen, not maintained properly and causes damage to somebody's vehicle, we get to inherit that, potentially that cost. So these are.
And we've had that before.
Yes, we've had that.
We've had damage to vehicles based on speed bumps.
Yes.
And the county's been liable on those actions, so.
Odd fact, uh, because obviously we've had to deal with this in the past. So I've, I've taken the time to, to kinda study, uh, some, some scholarship on these things to determine what, what has been found across the United States as it relates to the effectiveness of these devices to actually control things like speed. And it's, it's counterintuitive. What you find is that when you install a speed bump, especially along a straight run, where you get a steady amount of traffic, you get, you get a number of human nature type impacts that you wouldn't otherwise anticipate. One being that the speed of traffic approaching and leaving the speed bump is faster than the speed you were attempting to control. In other words, human nature tells you to go up to it faster, go over it at whatever speed you can clear it, and then haul honey away from it. You increase the speed beyond, especially beyond the device. So they don't do what they are intended to do in that respect. They're, they're very effective, by the way, in private parking areas in and around shopping areas especially, where you've got a lot of foot traffic. And you need to make sure that you don't allow a situation where somebody is hauling you know what and you've got a ton of foot traffic coming in and out of a point of ingress and egress. That's just simply not gonna be the case in our subdivisions.
I think you see it in Madison County, in the city of Madison, in private subdivisions, where they put them in there. But they're private.
That's correct.
And they maintain them and they maintain, I would assume they maintain the responsibility of what they fix on their own roadways.
That's correct. And generally, what we tell folks who inquire is if you can get all of the folks in your subdivision to come together and to agree that all of the roads within the subdivision will become private roads, privately maintained, we'll let you put your gate up and you can put as many speed bumps in there as you want and it'll be y'all's.
You gotta maintain the road, that's.
You maintain everything.
Well, I also, uh, and I've done it. Approach a speed bump, try to get around it.
Yes, sir.
And so you're in the other lane. And a lot of these places that say they want them have to park a vehicle on the road because they can only get two in their driveway.
Yes, sir.
And then you, I mean, I think it, uh, I can see another part that just makes it dangerous.
So.
Your rear rails at the, at the speed bump, that's where you gas it.
Would you mind maybe putting a letter together with some talking points on those things?
Yes, sir.
The main thing is the liability it places on the county.
Yes, sir.
To fix a object or a substance on the roadways that we're responsible for.
Yeah, we have to maintain them.
And your legal realm of that whole issue, just to go back on, on those same side.
It's, it's good, I mean, it's a knee jerk thing as yet, put them in, but it's about the same thing as giving every newlywed twenty thousand dollars apiece. You know, it sounds real good, but somebody's gotta pay for it.
That's right, I heard about that.
And especially when they get married, they figure it out and they're gonna get remarried every year.
That's right.
You know?
I was gonna renew my vow.
Yeah, uh, so that sounded good, but I don't think it would've worked.
Yes, sir.
Well, and two, and two, you're, uh, the liability part, because you got these people, and we see it right now. I've heard, got emails, uh, uh, they got these little low riding cars or got their little bitty tires, you know, big tires and a little bit of rubber.
Yep, and they're gonna be in those realms.
Yep, they do that and, and they're gonna, they're blaming, just a little bit of rise at a bridge, they damaged the wheel.
Yep.
They wouldn't bother anything else. So same thing with these things. They, and then they, they're, they drag the bottom of their vehicle.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna keep hearing that.
You, you will.
If, if you would, do you mind putting me some things together? I, I've gotta go back to the HOA again, which I've gone to numerous ones before on the same issue. I know we had one time, Jay, I think we talked about Auburn Avalon or something, you remember that?
Yep.
And part of that discussion was on that, um.
They still on it?
I don't know if we asked for, what did we do on that?
Our attorney set a very high threshold of like seventy-five percent. They made fifty percent. They just couldn't ever get, uh, over the hump to get to the seventy-five.
So what was the issue? Is that a doable thing? That you come back to those?
So what we've, what we've done in the past, where we get, where we get a lot of pressure, um, and, and, and the kind of pressure where it's, uh, lots of voices and we, we're making the assumption that it's everybody. We just ask them to go on the record, commit in writing, each resident of the, of the subdivision commits that they understand that they're gonna have to maintain the speed bumps. They're gonna have to, um, acknowledge that there could be damage and the county's not gonna be responsible for any damage. Once, once they start having to sign something that says all that, generally speaking, they're not nearly as.[1677.74]